Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of your Westland City Council to order. We will begin tonight with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Pro Tem Melissa Sampe.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for leading us in the pledge. Pro Tem Sampe. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Bowman is absent. Excuse Councilman Hart.
Here.
Councilman Hornbuckle.
Here.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
Present.
Councilman Wishart.
Here.
Pro Tem Sampe.
President McDermott.
Here.
A quorum is present.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. We will now turn it over to our Chief of Police, Kyle Dolly, for a special announcement and presentation.
All right, good. Well, thank you, Chief. Appreciate you giving me the podium here. Should I take that? Oh, sure. This might be a little better. Use us instead. All right. Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, all the officials from the city of Westland, and probably most importantly, all the citizens of Westland. My name's Robert Stevenson. I'm currently the Executive Director with the Michigan Association of Chiefs of Police. I've been in this position for 13 years. Prior to that, I spent 37 years in your northern border at the city of Livonia, where I was chief, for the last seven years. And when I'm here tonight representing the Michigan Law Enforcement Accreditation Commission for the awarding of the Certificate of Accreditation to the city of Westland Police Department. I'm taking a little extra pride in this tonight. I worked with the chief's father in Livonia. I knew the chief many, many years ago when he was much younger, and so was I, and we both had hair. So I take a lot of pride in being here tonight. I think that sometimes you don't recognize the excellence that you're surrounded by because you just become used to it. And I know from the years that I spent in Livonia that Westland had an excellent police department. They were always partnered with Livonia, and they were very active and looked up to here in southeastern Michigan. And sometimes you don't recognize that excellence when it's around you, but I can tell you that the city of Westland Police Department is well respected in southeast Michigan and actually throughout the state. And their achievement in getting accreditation is big. Not only are they being accredited by the Michigan Law Enforcement Accreditation Commission, but they're one of five police agencies in the state of Michigan, yes, in the state of Michigan, that actually have attained KLEA or national accreditation also. To put that a little bit into perspective, in the state of Michigan, there's just shy of 600 police agencies. Of those police agencies, 83 of them are county sheriffs, just shy of 400 are municipal agencies, and the rest come from hospitals and tribal police and such. And of all the police agencies in the state of Michigan, the Westland Police Department is the 89th police agency to become MEliAC accredited, and again, as I said, one of only five in the whole state of Michigan that are credited by both. And I think that your citizens should take a lot of pride in that. I think we've all recognized there's been a lot of calls for police reform across the country, and they should take a lot of pride in knowing that their police agency has attained every single one of those standards that have been called for nationally. So they should be very proud of that and take a lot of comfort in that. So as I said when I started this, I am here, and we are here tonight, to award this certificate of accreditation. It is not given out, it's earned, and we're going to introduce our current Deputy Director of the Association and the Accreditation Program Manager, Chief Ron Wiles, to explain a little bit more. Chief?
Thank you. Well, good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to be here. It's certainly my pleasure to be here to recognize and honor your fine police department. As mentioned, my name's Ron Wiles. I'm the current Deputy Director with the Michigan Association Chiefs of Police. My law enforcement career was done in Grambling Township up in Genesee County, where I served 26 years. The last six, I had the honor of being their Chief of Police. You are all somewhat familiar with accreditation. There's a lot of professions that have accreditation programs. You know, your kids go to accredited schools. If you're sick or need medical attention, you go to an accredited medical facility. Law enforcement is no different. Accreditation is a progressive method to increase your overall performance and level of service of a law enforcement agency. Now, the foundation of our program lies in the voluntary compliance with 128 professional standards. The key word there is voluntary. No one's making the Westland Police Department do this. They did it for the sole reason of getting better, to be more efficient and more effective in the delivery of their service. Let me kind of break down the process they had to go through to do this. And for whatever reason, the first step for many police agencies is the most difficult. Part of my role as a Deputy Director is I get to tour the state of Michigan and talk to a lot of chiefs about what's going on in their communities. We talk about accreditation, and they all see the benefits, how it can make them better. But for whatever reason, they can't get over that first hurdle of just applying. It takes great leadership to get over that hurdle, and you have that in your police chief here in the city of Westland. So I commend the chief for getting over that first hurdle for applying, not only for ours, but actually completing the KLEA process as well. The second step in our process is where all the work is done. We call it self-analysis. We give agencies two years. They look at their current written directives, look at our 128 standards, and see where they're compliant. Now, I guarantee you initially when they looked at our standards, there were several areas they were already compliant. But I can also guarantee you that there were some areas where they were not. And it takes a lot of work to become compliant with those things. But I think you would all agree, it's one thing to say that you're compliant, it's another thing to show that you're compliant. Our accreditation program requires that they pull these things called proofs. Proofs show that they are compliant. They could be anything. They could be videos, they could be police reports, they could be interviews, things that the assessors can see to show that they're compliant with our standard. At the end of that process, when they think they are in a good spot to move on to the third step, the onsite assessment, they contact me. I send a team of assessors out to the agency from outside the area, so there's no bias with anyone nearby, and they do a top-to-bottom review of the agency. They look at all their standards, they look at the written directives, and they look at all the proofs, and they show that they're in compliance. They do interviews. Some of you may have been involved with that interview process. They do write-alongs with the officers. They may attend a roll call and that kind of stuff, all in the effort to show that the Westland Police Department is in compliance with 128 professional standards. At the end of that day, the agency has a pretty good idea if they're going to get to that next step. And obviously, in this case, they did. The next step being the commission hearings. The chief and the accreditation team will sit in front of a team of MEliAC commissioners, and they will be asked a series of questions, again, all in an effort to verify that compliance. At the end of that day, the MEliAC commissioners unanimously approved the city of Westland for full accredited status. Now, up to this point, they have made a promise. They made a promise to you, the elected officials. They made a promise to the members of the police department. Most importantly, they made a promise to the residents of the city of Westland. Now it's time for them to keep that promise. Now that takes us to the fifth step in our process, re-accreditation. Accreditation's good for a period of three years. At the end of that three years, I'm going to send another team of trained assessors out to the city of Westland. We're going to do this whole process all over again. But instead of this time, they have to do compliance with 128 standards for the first year, for the second year, and for the third year. So they have to do this process three times in a row with all the proofs, all the interviews, all the commitment to excellence that accreditation has. It's a significant professional accomplishment. I could not be more proud of the work they have done here on being duly accredited. Hopefully, you and the residents of the city of Westland are also very proud of them. With that, I'd like to introduce our current President, Chief Brian Ergang, from the Township of Kalamazoo for the presentation.
Good evening. It's an honor to be here with you tonight. If I may, I'm Brian Ergang. I'm the Chief of Police for the Kalamazoo Township Police Department in Kalamazoo, Michigan. I also have the honor of serving as the President for the Michigan Association of Chiefs of Police. Understand, the decision to obtain accreditation through the MEliAC is a difficult one, and the one I think the chief probably didn't make lightly. It can't be done with a whole host of folks, including your community, the board who makes a promise to the chief and allows him to pursue some budget ideas to help him achieve accreditation, and more importantly, with his staff. The accreditation process takes hundreds of hours of policy review, policy modification, policy implementation, numerous additional hours of training in all the name of making it a better police department for your community. In a moment, I'm going to ask the chief to say a few words after I read your award, and he's going to talk about some of the work that those people did. But what you're probably not going to hear from him is the vision and the leadership that he provided throughout all this. So I think it would be remiss if we didn't acknowledge the work that you did. So thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
With that, I'd like to read your award. Present it.
That's a big award.
For the Michigan Law Enforcement Accreditation Commission, to all those who see this certificate, know that the Westland Police Department, having voluntarily complied with the standards established by the Michigan Law Enforcement Accreditation Commission, deemed essential for the delivery of professional police services and the protection of their community, is hereby awarded this certificate accreditation effective today for a term of three years. Chief, congratulations.
Very nice.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Chief. Like I said, this is, you know, I'd like to thank the Commission for coming out and doing this. This is a great accreditation to be dual-credited. Like I said, one of five departments. But it's really the entire department did this. We do have an accreditation team. Everybody has different roles. So Lieutenant Gaddy's our accreditation manager. There's seven or eight of us that put together the proofs and the compliance to keep going. It's no one's dedicated job. It's all, they still do their regular job and do this. Which is, we're a busy department. That's how we have to do it. I'm very proud of everybody, the accreditation team, the whole department. This is a department-wide accreditation. Everybody's on board with the department. It's great. I'll end it with that. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, my councilor, the mayor, to come up for a picture with us, if you don't mind.
Yeah, the council would like to come down for a photo, and Deputy Chief Wilkie and Lieutenant Gaddy as well.
Sure.
Did you want me to take a picture with your phone? Did you want to get a?
Oh, I don't want to be in it.
Okay.
Yeah, because I get everybody to scoot to the left a little bit more. Or can I?
Three, two, one.
All right, I'm good. All right. Thank you, guys. Congratulations again to Lieutenant Gaddy, to Deputy Chief Wilkie, to Chief Dolly, and the entire Westland Police Department on this great accreditation. So we appreciate all the work that went into this and all the work that you do each and every day for our community and to make this possible. So job well done. All right. We will now move on to questions or input on the agenda from the public. This section will allow members of the public at the beginning of this meeting to address the council regarding items that are on tonight's business agenda. Questions asked may be responded to during the agenda item following a motion in support from your city council. Is there anyone on my left? Yes, Derek.
Hello, Derek Burkeis, resident of Westland. I'm here today to talk about item one on your new business agenda, and that is the support for Michigan Humane and their contract for the next three years. I wrote this down because I'm going to try to get through this because I'm sure you all know I'm pretty passionate about animals. I hope you support Michigan Humane and the contract for the next three years. The need for a competent partner shelter is paramount for the health and safety of animals here in Westland. Yes, we share this shelter with other partnering cities, and we should push for more services to help Westland residents in particular within this city. And yes, they could do more, but couldn't we all? To say that continuing this contract will do more harm than good is ridiculous. As you are all aware, shelters, fosters, rescues, transport people, it's pushed to the max, and it's been this way for a while and not slowing down. We need a partner within this city that can work with the growing need that is, that we have here within this city. And may I remind you, we have no one else. None of us likes to make the tough decisions. It makes us angry to hear of unnecessary death. It sucks, does to me. But we can help as a city. We can create pathways of hope, work with folks to help spay and neuter, help with basic food, treats, and in teaching them with empathy rather than judgment about the needs of spaying and neutering the pets here in the city of Westland and abroad. We can educate folks on why it's important to take care of their pets and why it makes sense for everyone. We can put less pressure on an already over flexed system. Until then, until we can fix the systems and fix the problems that we have, we need a shelter, and the one we need is Michigan Humane. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone wishing to speak on my right on the agenda? Anyone on my left? Yes, Mr. Warren.
Oh, item L. In regards to the approval of the bid contract extension, I don't see a dollar amount under there. So if somebody can tell us what the dollar amount for that, those three-year extension. So that's all I'm looking for. Because all the rest of the items, be it you got dollars on there, but this one you don't have a dollar amount. Thank you.
We can get that for you. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak on the agenda? Anyone else in the audience? Okay. Seeing and hearing none, we will move on to the consent calendar. Is there a motion? There's a motion by Councilman Hart, supported by Councilwoman Rakowski. Are there any changes to the consent calendar? Any changes to the consent calendar? Yes, Pro Tem.
Thank you, Council President. I would like to move item L, just so we can address the question in regards to the amount.
There's a motion to move item L to new business. Is there support?
Support.
There's a support by Councilwoman Rakowski. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Bowman is absent. Excuse Councilman Hart.
Yes.
Councilman Hornbuckle.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
Yes.
Councilman Wishart.
Yes.
Pro Tem Sampe.
Yes.
President McDermott.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, now back to the consent calendar. As amended, are there any other changes to the consent calendar? Any other changes? Any dissent? Any dissent? Okay. Seeing and hearing none, motion passes.
Council has approved the following consent calendar items. Minutes of the regular meeting and the study session held March 17, 2025. Approval of craft beer and wine event on September 13, 2025. Approval of blues brews and barbecue event on August 1 and August 2, 2025. Approval to waive all rental fees in the amount of $1,240 for the Northwest Wayne Chapter of Face Addiction Now event on August 28, 2025. Approval to close roads to hold the Memorial Day Parade on May 25, 2025. Approval to place one handicap parking sign at 35009 Nancy Street. Approval of renewal of the city's existing employee attendance and hours software system for departments of innovation and technology, human resources, and payroll with subscription services. Term of this renewal should be effective for a one-year period in an amount not to exceed $16,409. Approval of renewal of web hosting service agreement to maintain our city website domain renewal is for a one-year period amount not to exceed $13,944.66. Approval of cybersecurity service to upgrade an existing cybersecurity appliance for the Department of Innovation and Technology. The term shall be ongoing until canceled by the city at a total cost not to exceed $13,725. Approval of bid for firewall upgrade from GHA Technologies for the Department of Innovation and Technology. It'll total cost not to exceed $10,385.39. Approval of bid for firewall upgrade from GHA Technologies for the department. Hold on. That's a repeat. Disregard. Let's see. Item L was postponed to new business. Approval of extension of professional services agreement between the city and Palm Motts Youth Assistance Administration. Contract extended for six years, amount not to exceed $266,325. Approval of purchase of one turnout gear washer from University Laundry Machinery for the fire department. Combination of approved ARPA funds and state grant funds to cover the cost in an amount not to exceed $14,307. Adoption of ordinance 101G93 to amend the city code, Chapter 62, Article 7, Section 62336, 62344, 62371, 62372, 62373, 62374, and 62375 to prohibit certain uses of inhalants. Adoption of ordinance 2481117 to amend ordinance 248 to show CB3 general commercial business for garden apartment residential to be developed into multifamily living community. This was planning department number 2272. Adoption of ordinance 248A118 to amend ordinance 248 to show office business district where R2 single-family residential district had been at 32730 Palmer Road, planning department number 2271. This was introduced March 3, 2025. Adoption of prepared land division resolution, 32730 Palmer Road. This was planning department number 2271A. This land division was approved by city council on March 3, 2025. Adoption of prepared land division resolution, Griffith Animal Hospital, 32, I'm sorry, 36392 Ford Road. This was planning department number 1532E. The land division was approved by city council on January 21, 2025. Adoption of prepared resolution to proclaim May 11 through the 17, 2025 National Police Week in the city of Westland. The last item approved on the consent calendar, adoption of prepared resolution to proclaim May 18, 2025 Public Works Week in the city of Westland. Moving to payment of vouchers.
Is there a motion? Is there support? Oh, sorry. There's a motion by Councilman Hornbuckle. There's support by Councilman Wishart. Is there any comments from the maker? Any comments from the supporter? Okay. Any additional comments from the council? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, motion passes.
New business. Item one. Approval of annual animal sheltering agreement with the Michigan Humane Society. The term of this renewal shall be for three years.
Is there a motion?
Still moved.
Is there support? Motion by Councilwoman Rakowski, supported by Councilman Wishart. Are there any comments from the maker?
Yes, thank you, Council President. First, I'd like to thank Mr. Burghouse, Derek. I think we all know it was Derek, for speaking about this topic. It seems every year when we have to renew this, we kind of get a little bit of sticker shock about how much it actually costs for us to take care of the animals in our community. And I think one of the very most important things and special things about the city of Westland is that it's not just about dogs and cats at the Humane Society for our residents. This particular Humane Society takes care of all types of animals, many of those animals that might be wild and hurt as well. A couple of years ago, we added to our voucher system a report from the Michigan Humane so that we actually know how many animals are being rehomed and how many animals are unfortunately unable to be rehomed and likewise, you know, meet an untimely end for themselves. And it also explains all of the values and charges attached to that. And I thought that was something that was very important, and it gives us a little bit of clarity about what's really taking place. So, you know, with there not being any other entities that really can house the animals, this is obviously something that we need in our community. So I really like the idea of us working together and helping create some more advocacy, and I know that that's one of your heart missions. So I'm in support of this. I would hope that we can continue to work with them so that more rehoming is occurring than the other situation. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rakowski. Is there any comments from the supporter? Is there any additional discussion from the council? Yes, Pro Tem Sampe.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing up the support of Michigan Humane. I also support Michigan Humane as well. My concern really, I guess, stems around the amount proposed. So we do have a one-year contract proposal of $36,345 a month. Westland does take in cats quite frequently in addition to dogs. I think that probably raised the proposal. Originally, when it was proposed to us, it was $60,000 a month, which was quite large. I know that the administration worked really hard to negotiate that down. So I don't have a problem with the one year of 13, then we go to 18, then we go to 24. I think there is a lot of education here that we, as kind of a group and a body, that perhaps there's things that we can do in the community that will help out. My question concerns, as I look through the contract, I have Any additional comments from the council? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, motion passes.
New business. Item 1. Approval of annual animal sheltering agreement with the Michigan Humane Society. The term of this renewal shall be for three years.
Is there a motion?
Still moved.
Is there support? Motion by Councilwoman Rakowski, supported by Councilman Wishart. Are there any comments from the maker?
Yes, thank you, Council President. First, I'd like to thank Mr. Berghe... Berghouse? Heis? Derek. I think we all know him as Derek, for speaking about this topic. It seems every year when we have to renew this, we kind of get a little bit of sticker shock about how much it actually costs for us to take care of the animals in our community. And I think one of the very most important things and special things about the City of Westland is that it's not just about dogs and cats at the Humane Society for our residents. This particular Humane Society takes care of all types of animals, many of those animals that might be wild and hurt as well. A couple of years ago, we added to our voucher system a report from the Michigan Humane so that we actually know how many animals are being rehomed and how many animals are unfortunately unable to be rehomed and likewise, you know, meet an untimely end for themselves. And it also explains all of the values and charges attached to that. And I thought that was something that was very important, and it gives us a little bit of clarity about what's really taking place. So, you know, with there not being any other entities that really can house the animals, this is obviously something that we need in our community. So, I really like the idea of us working together and helping create some more advocacy. And I know that that's one of your heart missions. So, I'm in support of this. I would hope that we can continue to work with them so that more rehoming is occurring than the other situation. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rakowski. Is there any comments from the supporter? Is there any additional discussion from the council? Yes, Pro Tem Sampi.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing up the support of Michigan Humane. I also support Michigan Humane as well. My concern really, I guess, stems around the amount proposed. So, we do have a one-year contract proposal of $36,345 a month. Westland does take in cats quite frequently in addition to dogs. I think that probably raised the proposal. Originally, when it was proposed to us, it was $60,000 a month, which was quite large. I know that the administration worked really hard to negotiate that down. So, I don't have a problem with the one year of 13, then we go to 18, then we go to 24. I think there is a lot of education here that we, as kind of a group and a body, that perhaps there's things that we can do in the community that will help out. My question concerns, as I look through the contract, I have several. So, I had talked to administration, which they did state that you guys from the Michigan Humane Society would be open to a study session. So, I would like to dive in a little bit deeper. So, I would, I would actually like a study session to go through this because there's language in here that I had a lot of questions on. So, that's what I'm proposing, just so we can have everything out on the table. I support the Humane Society. Actually, my dog that just recently passed away, I adopted from the Humane Society. So, all in support of the Humane Society. I just, again, want to go through language deeper.
Okay, is there any additional discussion from the council? I do have a couple of things that I wanted to address. Number one, Pro Tem Sampi, we can potentially get a study session, you know, scheduled even after the fact just to have a broader conversation with Michigan Humane and kind of talk about the future and what that looks like. I had the opportunity to actually talk with Derek last week and kind of educate myself. In years past, I have admittedly voted down on this contract due to my hesitation around it being what is labeled a euthanasia kill shelter. And the unfortunate part of it is, you know, it's easy to sit in point and say, well, here on Valley, which is not associated with Michigan Humane but is a Humane Society, is a no-kill shelter, why can't we be? Well, the reality is, and thank you to Derek for educating me on this and informing me, is that they get a lot of private donations from the Ann Arbor community that we just simply don't have access to. And they have hundreds of thousands of dollars in private funds to be able to have a pick-and-shoes kind of mentality at their facility of what animals they will, and importantly, what animals they won't take. And, you know, admittedly, I had been someone in the past that had pointed to here on Valley and say, and said, why can't we be more like what they're doing with a no-kill shelter? Well, unfortunately, the resources for what the team at Michigan Humane is doing just, you know, don't exist. The space doesn't exist. And as, you know, he informed me on, if you have, you know, five animals in three spaces, unfortunately, there are tough decisions that have to be made. And so, I think a big part of what we can do in the future is really the education piece and working with Michigan Humane and working, more importantly, with the community, with our school system, with, you know, adult pet owners in the community to educate people on what it means to be a pet owner and a responsible pet owner because it is an investment. Getting a pet isn't something that you just give your kid to open up under the Christmas tree, whether it's a dog, it's a cat, it's a lizard, it's a bird. It is a lifetime investment. It could be for your lifetime, and certainly it will be for that pet's lifetime. And depending on the breed of dog you get, the type of pet you get, it really depends on, you know, what kind of training and ownership and costs are going to be associated with that. So, in order to prevent more cats and dogs and other animals from going there and being unfortunately and tragically euthanized, I think we can do more on our end as a community to work with Michigan Humane and do that educational piece so that we're educating folks, whether it's kids or adults, on what it means to truly be a responsible pet owner and really truly love and take care of your animal and provide for them as you would any human being in your household. And we know that responsible adults as pet owners will bring their children and raise their children up to be, in all likelihood, responsible pet owners as well. So, in the past, I've had consternation about that and has been my reasoning for voting it down, but I'm happy to have had the conversation and educate myself a little bit more on the reality of the situation. I want to thank my colleague for the questions that she brought up as well and for the administration working hard to, you know, get a better rate on this because I think the initial offering was way out of the ballpark and well out of reason of what we would have wanted to approve spending your tax dollars. So, thank you to everybody who put the hard work into this. Is there any additional discussion from the council? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, motion passes.
New business. Item 1A. Approval of contract extension for Highland Land Leaping for as-needed weed cutting services. Contract would be extended for three years with a two-year option at the city's discretion.
Still moved. Support.
There's a motion by Councilman Hurd, support by Pro Tem Sampi. And we did have a question, so if you want to answer that, Director Adams, before we get into comments.
Yes, thank you, no problem. Through the chair, this is an as-needed weed cutting, or as-needed contract with a rate schedule attached to it. So, it's an as-needed rate schedule contract with no annual obligation and no annual volume. So, the rates range from $12 all the way to $48. One of the rates I will call out is a per-acre fee of $41. That gives you a rough idea of what the rates are. But again, it's an as-needed rate schedule contract with no annual obligation.
Thank you, Director Adams. Is there any questions from the maker?
Yeah, I'm just going to reiterate what the director said. I was ready to answer it too, but the director beat me to it. So, whenever you see an as-needed, something like that the council approves, there's not going to be a dollar amount in the agenda because it's as-needed, right? So, they provide a rate schedule. So, yeah, when you pick up your agenda upfront, it just got the agenda, but if you are really curious, you can always download the packet from the website. And it's got all supporting documentation in it, so you could look it up and right here under L, it'll tell you what the rate schedule is. So, pretty much administration has that price book that will approve, assuming that we do, that they can go ahead and use as needed. So, they could spend none of it, or they could spend more of it, depending on how the DPS, if they're too busy or they can't do it, then they can lay that over into Highland to supplement our DPS services as needed, which makes more financial sense. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman Hurd, for that. Pro Tem Sampi.
Thank you, Council President. Through the chair, too, Devin Adams, our controller. I know that we have a rate sheet here. We have worked with Highland Landscape in the past. Do you have a rough idea, just to give Mr. Warren, of what we have spent previously based on an... I know it's hard to say as-needed, but just so we can get a rough estimate of what we're looking at.
Through the chair, I would say roughly about $300,000 to $500,000. But again, that's as-needed, and part of this contract does include recouping our costs on the tax rule through the, you know, the vacant lots that we cut it. And if they don't pay the bill, it goes on the tax bill, and that's presented to council twice a year. So, there is some cost recouping as far as associated with this contract, but that's a rough range I can give you off the top of my head.
Okay. Thank you so much for that. So, hopefully, that answers the questions on an as-needed basis. So, in front of us, we do have the contract, and we do have the breakdown of some of the necessary items that would be per-unit cost. So, I'm in support of this, but I appreciate the question and having it brought up.
Thank you, Pro Tem Sampi. Any other discussion from the council? Just one point of clarity so that residents know, Director Adams, this contract is separate from Highland doing any landscaping or ground maintenance work at, let's say, Tatton Park, correct? Because this is just strictly for ordinance work when there's a violation issued to a business or resident for uncut grass. Is that correct?
Yes, that's 100% accurate.
Okay. Thank you very much, Director Adams. Is there any other discussion from the council? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, motion passes.
New business. Item 2. Approval of bid for the professional services agreement extension between the City of Westland and the WCA assessing for the full operation of the assessing department. Services for a period of three years commencing July 1, 2025 and ending June 30, 2028. Amount not to exceed $552,591 for the first year and 5% increases for year 2 and 3.
Is there a motion?
Still moved.
There's a motion by Councilman Hurd, supported by Councilman Hornbuckle. So, any discussion from the maker?
Not at this moment.
Okay. Any discussion from the supporters?
Not at this moment.
Great. Any other discussion from the council? I do have discussion then. I just want to let folks know that I've had a couple of conversations, one during our council leadership meeting with Pro Tem Sampi and the mayor and deputy mayor Godvout, and I've talked to, you know, Deputy Mayor Godvout about this before. One of the questions that I've raised in the past with previous administrations and with this one is, why don't we bring assessing back in-house as it used to be here in the City of Westland? Because we did have a Level 4 assessing team here in Westland. There is an unfortunate, you know, reality that it's very hard to find qualified Level 4 assessors out there in the state of Michigan. They are in a finite supply. There are only so many people across our state that actually have a Level 4 assessing, you know, certification. So, bringing assessing in-house not only has that challenge, but also the challenge of having a full administrative and clerical staff that comes with it. We have a great assessor, Jennifer Stamper, who does, you know, fine work here for the city, and we appreciate all that she does as a part of the team at Wayne County Assessing. But the reality of bringing in assessing in-house just isn't what it used to be. I, you know, looking at it is probably, you know, more cost prohibitive. I will separate the politics from the business of the city and be in support of this Wayne County assessing contract. I don't want to dive into the weeds of some other stuff as to why I feel a little bit uncomfortable because I don't think it's fully germane here, so I'm going to not elaborate on that. But if anybody wants to know, I'd be happy to stay afterwards and talk about the WCA assessing as a entity. But nonetheless, I did get some questions from folks about why doesn't the city look at in-house assessment or doing what we used to do? I've had those conversations, as I mentioned, with prior administrations and with this current administration, and they gave a pretty thorough and comprehensive answer as to why we're continuing to bid out this contract. Is there any other discussion from the council?
Yes.
Yes.
We've had the luxury of having a wonderful assessing team for many, many years. And while I understand that you may have feelings, I would kindly ask you to be careful of your disparaging remarks.
I've noted. Is there any other discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, motion passes.
New business. Item 3. Adoption of resolution to authorize application for a one-day liquor license to sell beer and wine at the 14th Annual Craft Beer and Wine Event to take place on Tatton Park grounds on September 13, 2025, 4:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. If approved, the mayor and city clerk are authorized to sign the application on behalf of the city and submit to the State of Michigan Liquor Control Commission.
Still moved.
So, motion by Councilwoman Rakowski, supported by Councilman Hurd. Is there any discussion from the maker? Any discussion from the supporter?
No, councilman.
Any additional discussion from the council? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, motion passes.
New business. Item 4. Adoption of resolution to authorize the city to apply for a special two-day liquor license for beer and wine sales at the 14th Annual Blues, Brews, and Barbecue Event to take place on Central City Park grounds on August 1 and August 2, 2025. If approved, the mayor and city clerk are authorized to sign the application on behalf of the city and to submit it to the State of Michigan Liquor Control Commission.
Still moved. Support.
There's a motion by Councilman Hurd, supported by Pro Tem Sampi. Is there any discussion from the maker?
No dissent.
Any discussion from the supporter? Any additional discussion from the council? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, motion passes.
New business. Item 5. Adoption of prepared resolution authorizing the allocation of America... American Rescue Plan Act funds for the Westland Youth Athletic Association programming assistance in an amount not to exceed $100,000.
Still moved.
There's a motion by Councilwoman Rakowski, supported by Councilman Hornbuckle. Is there any discussion from the maker?
Absolutely.
Okay, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Council President. So, this allocation is to support all five of the entities that drive the youth sports in our community. So, that's the two football teams, our cheer team, our soccer team, and our baseball. And the motivation behind this is to make sure of two things. One, that the programs continue to be accessible and maintained through our city because that is pretty much the basis of any kind of organized recreation for the children in our community. And also, it allows for additional children who may not have the resources to participate in these organized sports, as well as some of the challenges that these organizations might face as far as being able to outfit teams or maintain fields because, you know, some of the things are not covered by what our city DPS and our contractors do. So, it's really an innovative and exciting look at what we may be able to do to, you know, plus what the youth sports are in the City of Westland, and also to be able to give our children access to healthy activities. So, as part of the subcommittee, I was really happy to bring this forward, and I would encourage my colleagues to support this because this is one of the things that in the ARPA outline is about creating health opportunities for your community. So, I'm really looking forward to seeing how this enhances the programs for our youth.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rakowski. Is there... Yes, Councilman Hornbuckle.
Yeah, just a quick comment. I'm glad this finally made it to this point. It's been kind of a little back and forth trying to get it here, but I'm glad it did make it here. I'm glad we are able to, well, hopefully, everyone will agree that helping the kids in this arena, getting them outside, not playing video games, but helping them get outside, play sports, learn team sport building, those are really critical skills, and it's great that we're able to help the young generation form those skills at a very early age. So, I'd definitely be supporting this and encourage the rest of the council to support this as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Hornbuckle. Pro Tem Sampi.
Okay. Thank you, Council President. I want to thank the subcommittee for bringing this forward. Obviously, I don't need to belabor what you said, but I also agree on sports and being a sports mom for quite some time. I understand and I get it. What I will say is, Council President and myself have been working very closely with the leadership over at WYAA. The reason why it took a minute to get it here, because what we're going to do is we're going to authorize this $100,000. We're going to work with Director Adams to take the invoices as they come in. So, what we'll do is we'll have a line item of what the amount and the items that are being spent. Ideally, it would be great for them to get the money, but we really want to be conscious of taxpayer dollars to make sure that it's line item appropriately. Just to give everyone a little bit of context, I had asked WYAA of saying, hey, what does it look like for your spring and fall sports from a budget perspective? Right now, baseball's running, and again, this is, this is the needs, about $18,000 in the red. Comets football and cheer is $71,000 in the red. Meteors is $71,000. And then they also have overhead costs, which is like their website, their accountant, they have a building, so that's where they train their taxes and such. So, I know this money is going to be greatly needed and used. Speaking with the leadership over at WYAA, they thank the council for bringing this forward. They thank the administration for the support, and I know that they really are very happy that the city is stepping up and supporting them for their programming because really, without this money, they would have to go very hard on fundraising, which they still will do, but it might, it might actually put a damper on their season. So, I just wanted to give the council just a little bit of an update. I know I've sent you guys the sheet, but I wanted to also let the public know that we're working behind the scenes with the leadership just to make sure your tax dollars are spent appropriately and that all the information that we're getting, we're sharing out. So, thank you, Council President, for allowing me that update, and thank you, council, and obviously, I will be in support of this.
Thank you, Council President. Pro Tem Sampi, any other discussion from the council? I just want to say thank you first off to my colleague who was on the ARPA Subcommittee with me, Councilwoman Rakowski, for bringing this forward. This has been, you know, a long time coming. We've had this discussion for a couple of years, and thanks to her leadership. And, you know, I know Pro Tem Sampi and I talked to folks at WYA, but she was really the initial one to get this off the ground and get the plane in the air and move this agenda item forward, especially in a post-COVID world where there's so many needs for community organizations and so much competition out there for scarce dollars for funding resources and charitable resources. To be able to support a local group like this that makes a huge and wide impact on kids in our community is critically important. Without the work that WYA does, you know, we would have a big vacuum with sports and summertime and after-school activities here in our community. So, I appreciate my colleague for bringing this forward, Councilwoman Rakowski. Appreciate my colleague, Pro Tem Sampi, for helping me get this onto the agenda, and for the team at WYA. and for the team at W Y A for working with us to ensure that we get all the information and answers and transparency that we need to make an informed decision on this. And I will gladly and happily uh, support this agenda item tonight. Any other discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, motion passes.
New business. Item six. Adoption of prepared resolution proclaiming April two thousand twenty-five Autism Acceptance Month in April two, two thousand twenty-five to be proclaimed World Autism Day.
There's a motion by Pro Tem Sampi, supported by Councilwoman Rukowski. I am gonna guess there's discussion from the maker.
Yeah. Thank you, colleagues, for waiting for me to say so moved first. Uh, obviously, everyone knows my passion uh, for disabilities and autism awareness with my brother being love functioning and having autism. So I was very pleased that uh, administration allowed me to put this on the agenda. Thank you, Council President, and my colleagues for supporting. This obviously is just near and dear to my heart. I will talk a little bit more in my comments about the um, Autism Acceptance Day that we're doing here on the twenty-sixth, but um, yeah, I mean, I think that's it. I, I just want to thank my colleagues for supporting and with it being near and dear to my heart, last year we did, I think, just twenty-four. So I don't think we're doing it in, um, I think we're gonna do it every year. I think that's kind of what we talked about. So, um, so anyways, I just wanted to mention this and thank you, colleagues, for supporting.
Okay, any questions from the support? Any other discussion from the council? I just want to say, uh, thank you, Pro Tem Sampi, for bringing this forward. You know, a lot of times we bring resolutions forward and people are like, well, what does it, you know, really do? But these resolutions like autism awareness really do raise awareness for folks who are differently abled in our community, who may be, you know, a marginalized voice in our community. And it gives them the opportunity to be seen and to be heard and to know that their um, disability doesn't define them and that they are welcome and included in our community as anyone would be. So thank you for putting this together and thank you for bringing it forward. Is there any other discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, motion passes. Okay, we are now going to move on to public comment. Everyone speaking before the council shall do so in a civil manner. Speakers shall refrain from abusive or profane remarks, vulgar language, disruptive outbursts, threats, racial slurs, or other conduct that interferes with the orderly conduct of this business meeting. Personal attacks on council members, the administration, city staff, other speakers, or members of the public will not be tolerated. The clock will start upon the first words of the speaker and will not stop while the speaker is recognized from the floor. The speaker can ask questions at this time, and the person questioned may respond during the speaker's allotment of time. However, the clock will not be stopped once it is started. The clock will continue to run until the three minutes is up or the person is done speaking. Is there anyone wishing to speak? Public comment on my right. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me, um, give me the time here to speak to the council. Uh, my name is Allison Hurst. I'm the Executive Director of Recovery Action Network. We are a nonprofit organization that serves people in recovery from substance use disorder. Uh, one of the items on the consent calendar was an overdose awareness event, and that is something that we are co-hosting with the Northwest Wayne Chapter of Face Addiction Now. Um, we do serve um, everybody in recovery in all of Western Wayne County, and we're getting ready to open a recovery community center in downtown Wayne. Um, so I did bring some cards here. We're gonna be opening, uh, June fifth is our official launch date, but we are fully moved into the center and we'll be running our support groups out of there in the next couple of weeks. Uh, so we are completely run by people in recovery from substance use. We do peer support groups, sober social activities, um, overdose prevention, Narcan distribution, really just trying to raise awareness about substance use in our community and let people know that recovery is possible. Um, so I'm just here to bring that to your attention, let you know that we're gonna be out here serving the Western Wayne County community and would love to have some support. Uh, I do have flyers about our overdose awareness event, too, if anybody is interested in attending, um, possibly coming out and supporting. We'll be right here in the grand ballroom, so I hope to see some of you there. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. And I think there will be several of us that will come and find you after the meeting to grab a flyer and talk a little bit more about it.
Actually, I can take s- seven or eight of them and distribute.
Yeah, definitely.
Give me eight of them.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you. Great, here. Keep a couple, just a case.
All right. All right, public comment. Is there anyone on my left? I see School Board Trustee Hines is already standing up, so I will call on her.
Thank you, council. Uh, my name is Melody Hines. I'm the president of the Wayne Westland Kiwanis Club, and I'd like to personally thank Mayor Kevin Coleman for helping the Kiwanis. Um, he donated some money, five hundred dollars, to our key club at John Clinton High School. Um, the kids are having an issue. They want to join the club, but it's twenty-five dollars to join and they don't have the money. And so they were concerned about losing the club. So thank you so much for your donation. We really appreciate it. Um, we have over sixty kids that want to be a part of the key club for the Kiwanis and a lot of community service. Uh, we had a, a book drive at the library yesterday, went really good, so we were able to raise some funds with that. Uh, we actually have a meeting tomorrow. We meet on the second Tuesday and the fourth Tuesday at the month, of the month, at the Westland Library at uh, one o'clock, I'm sorry, twelve o'clock. We might change the time a little bit later. Um, I also work for the Wayne Chamber of Commerce. We're having a free event called Form Your LLC, totally free at the Wayne Library. Um, it's gonna be April the tenth, um, from five-thirty to seven-thirty P M. Um, we have a partnership with the State of Michigan with the Small Business Development Center, and I'm gonna work to get that over out in Westland as well with the library and the chambers, so I'm working with the Westland Chamber with that. Um, today, we had the Wayne County uh, Women's Resource Fair. I'm a Wayne County Resource Commission person, so it was successful. I'd like to thank the Westland Police Department for participating today. We had over sixty-three vendors. It was amazing. And I would love to see if we could do something like this in the city of Westland, even like a skilled trades-type job fair. So, um, and then, um, I got a flyer, I will get this out to you. Uh, School Craft College is having a Skills Trades Job Fair April the ninth. Um, Wayne Westland, we have our uh, foundation, they're having Untapped Cork, the fundraiser for the teachers. Um, it's gonna be Friday, April the eleventh, um, at Hype from six to nine. Um, so it's gonna be music, uh, beer, wine, all that good stuff there, um, from Hype. They're having a free marshmallow drop for the kiddos. Uh, so I've been doing a lot of work with Hype as well, like with the community. So that's gonna be uh, Friday, April eighteenth. Um, so what I do, I like to do a lot of things in the community, so I've actually went to Michigan Works, and I've been working to really help people with jobs. So I've got some flyers for some jobs that they have, out some job fairs. I'll get this out to you guys and make sure, because, you know, with everything going on, it's really important to have some employment in our community. And um, last but not least, um, I have these free resources for anybody who wants them to start their businesses through the Michigan Small Business Development Center. They have resources that's helping you start your business plan for free, coaches, mentors, everything for free. So um, if you need anything, my number is seven-three-four-six-two-four-one-two-two-eight, and we have a school board meeting on Monday.
You've got it, and just in the nick of time. Thank you for all the updates. Appreciate it.
That was a heavenly good speech.
Is, is there anyone on my, yes, ma'am?
I've never done this, so.
You're welcome.
I'm here to talk about flooding. Um, you know, we had the rain last week, and I've lived in, on Arcola in Westland for forty-four years. I'm used to floods. It's, you know, not a big deal, a couple inches, two, three inches, four, five inches. But what happened this time was totally different. And because of the fact that uh, I have been through this so many times, when I got a new hot water heater, they put it on top of cement blocks. I got a new um, furnace two years ago. They put it on top of cement blocks. Guess what? Both of them went out. So I had, have had at least sixteen inches of water in my basement. But the unusual part about this, the real unusual part, is that the other end of the street had nothing. The street behind us has nothing. If you look at these, about ten houses that are right up against Warren, right behind DeLucas, right, right up at Warren, there's about five houses on each side. There've been uh, HVAC people there, starting furnaces, somebody needs a new hot water heater, but the other end of the street doesn't look like that. The other thing, as I'm looking at the time, the other thing is that looks different is that there's a lot of, uh, when the, when the flooding was done, in the street, there was a lot of dirt and leaves all over the street, and we've never seen that before, which makes me think that there was some kind of blockage or something. And I called today and nobody called me back, but I just thought since there was a meeting, I would come up here to the meeting and say, what should I do or who can we talk to? Somebody needs to just say, what happened here? Because you know it's gonna rain again. Sixteen inches in my basement.
Yeah, and um, ma'am, what we can do is we can, um, if you, ma'am, if you'd like to stay after the meeting, we can have the mayor talk to you. So we'll capture your information. The mayor can talk to you and kind of go over more in depth what happened there on uh, on Arcola and talk to you more about it. So if you'd like to hang around for us until after the meeting, we'd be happy to talk to you.
Okay, thank you.
And I think the mayor will have more to say during his comments as well, probably.
Council President? Could I, could I just respond?
We don't usually go back and forth like that while the person's up here.
I was gonna have the deputy mayor meter in the back and get her address.
Okay, that's fine. Yep.
Thank you.
Is there anyone on my left? Yes, Ryan.
Good evening, council. Mr. Mayor, um, my name is Ryan. I'm the president of Westland Historical Society. I'm also representing the uh, commission. Uh, on uh, April twenty-sixth, the uh, Westland Historic Village is hosting our annual cleanup day from ten A M. till four. Uh, this will be yard work, indoor/outdoor cleaning, uh, gardening. If you're interested, uh, please bring uh, rakes, gloves, shovels. Uh, we do have a few, but not many. Uh, if you have a high school student or a junior high student that needs volunteer hours, uh, please send them up. Uh, send them up on Sa- any Saturday, we're open also. Uh, also, the Westland Historical Society's uh, next meeting is tomorrow, so it's a little late for everybody at home. Uh, but we meet every uh, second Tuesday of the month at the village from six-thirty till uh, roughly uh, seven-thirty or eight. And finally, uh, we are interested in expanding our yearbook collection. Uh, we have every year of John Glenn, except for the last two, uh, hopefully we can add those two. And we have every year of John Glenn, I'm sorry, John Marshall. Um, we are looking for all the rest. So if anybody out there has Wayne Memorial, uh, Franklin, Adams, or Stevenson, we are looking for those as well. And to uh, add the elementary schools in there, the little, you know, one-page class photos, too. Uh, you can give us copies of those if you're uh, interested in donating those. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on my right? Anyone else on my left? Ms. Dale.
Good evening, everyone. Ruth Dale, local historian. I was unable to attend a council meeting recently when you approved funds for new fencing. Thank you for that, for the Gunong Cemetery and a new sign. The land known today as Gunong Cemetery was first owned by an early pioneer named Horace Whitman in section thirty-five, and he had two hundred forty acres. It began as a family burial lot before Buckland and even Nankin Township was here. The first burial was in eighteen twenty-six. Uh, this would be for Lucinda Whitman. In the early eighteen thirties, William Gunong bought the land and he donated one acre, including the Whitman Burial Lot. Residents in the area met to form a corporation in order to buy an additional acre to increase the size of the cemetery. Two years later, in eighteen ninety-nine, fifty evergreens were planted and a new sign was erected over the south gate, and it read William Gunong Cemetery. The historic sign is a hundred twenty-five years old today. Info for Arthur Warren back here. The cemetery became city-owned in nineteen eighty-nine. Thank you for listening.
Whoops. Thank you, Ms. Dale. Is there? And is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak in public comment? Yes, Mr. Warren.
Well, for one thing about that cemetery, I'm glad they stopped burials there because my wife wants to uh, put me away. Well, here, I'm here today as I represent the Southeast Westland Homeowners Association. And um, I have some troubling things in regards to community block grant funds. I found out over the years from the Yosemite Church that they had been applying for community block grant funds for over ten years, and the applications never reached the commission. The applications have never reached the commission. And so that's one thing that was troubling. Uh, that's why they approached me as a leader in Southeast Westland community. Also, one of the other issues was the um, question of those ARPA funds, those ten thousand dollars funds, and that the council was misled by giving one side of the story for you to make that decision. Two also, that when we talked about Co- uh, ARPA, uh, the Community Block Grant Funds uh, last year, the mayor was supposed to meet with the commission. The mayor had never met, never met with us. And I was hoping that council would have kept up on that. And so they instituted the regular program without community recommendations and spent the money. Now, the other task here is that roadblock for the communities is that now they've pulled a another issue of matching funds, asking the Yosemite and Christ Temple to go out and uh, solicit funds to match what they're on the program. And then I raised the question is that, is the Friendship Center is getting, getting funds, Neighborhood Services is getting funds, and at one time, the police department. Where were they getting their funds from? They were getting them from the city treasury. Okay? Now, I think that is absolutely wrong because those are our tax dollars working against us. We are asked to go and solicit funds, stand on the corner and get funds to run our programs, and what the city does with our tax dollars is finance, finance things like the Friendship Centers to a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. We could never get, we could never raise that kind of money, but to go right to the treasury and get that money. I don't know whether they need your permission to get that money to back them up or not. So what I'm requesting here is that the, pretty much the council repeal that ordinance so that we can all have a fair shake at those community development funds, because that's how the federal government intended. If they wanted you to have that million dollars, they should have put a, a matching funds on the city to provide a million dollars before they get it.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Your time is up.
Well, I'm gonna be back here two weeks with my crew, the whole city. And so we'll get an answer coming then. Thank you for that.
Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak? Public comment? Yes, Linda.
Good evening, um, to the council, maybe to the chief. Um, I have some concerns with uh, Family Dollar, which is on one thirty-eight Wayne Street, with an RV that has been there for, documented by the manager and workers for over three months. Um, I have talked to a council member who has brought it to the attention, but I also had personally called on Wednesday to the police department and left a very detailed message concerning the issue of the van, um, RV. It had at one time doubled. There was two RVs in this parking lot for multiple days, and then I was told there was two RVs and a truck camper there for additional days. Um, but the concern is this, this one RV that's been there for over two months, for sure, because there's a new worker there that stated, I started, and the RV was already there. Um, it doesn't move. The curtains are closed. The curtains are closed around it, and the workers have mentioned, and I guess have actually called the manager or owner of the business, who has called the police department and stated that there's some safety concerns. One, addressing the concern of needles and other items by the trash can, and then the concern that there's people going in and out of the RV at nighttime while they're closing, that they're afraid to actually even go to the garbage can. I personally have walked up there, took pictures of the RV. This RV has not moved. The curtains are closed, but it started mysteriously today at 4:30. I know that the worker said that there was a police person there, but the RV's still there. So my, my concern is what's going on that there's people going in and out of this RV at night? But why is it there for two months? When did Family Dollar become a free RV station? So I appreciate your time. I hope you all have a good night.
Thank you for bringing that forward. We will chat with you after the meeting, get some more information about that, and if chief wants to stay after to chat with you, that's fine. Okay, thank you, chief. Appreciate that. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak on public comment? Anyone else in the audience? Okay, seeing you're hearing none, we will close public comment and move on to comments from the administration. Mayor?
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, City Council, and everybody in attendance tonight. Linda, we'll have the police department talk to you, get some specifics about the RV that you're concerned about. We want to make sure that, that our law enforcement's looking into that. To respond to Mr. Warren's comments, the CDBG Advisory Board, happy to meet with them anytime. I know I've reached out to you and met with you and other members of the board. I've reached out to Ms. Worm several times. We have an open door in the mayor's office, so anybody, any resident of the city of Westland, any business owner or stakeholder in the city, any elected official or appointed board member is happy to, I'd be happy to meet with them anytime. So we're, we're an open door. And I just want to let you know that the administration aims to craft budgets that are for the good and welfare of all eligible areas for those CDBG funds. We want to make sure they're spent fairly. But I am very open to hearing your suggestions or recommendations of specific items that you'd like to see funded, so, and I'm sure the city council would agree with that, too. On another note, I'm happy to announce that I submitted the proposed balanced budget for fiscal year 2025, 2026 to city council on April 1st. This budget strengthens the city's commitment to fiscal responsibility, community investment, and long-term sustainability. I'd like to thank every department for all the hard work they put into this budget, and I'd especially like to thank our finance team and Deputy Mayor Godbout for their work. The proposed budget adds $594,970 to the unrestricted fund balance, bringing it from a projected $7.8 million to approximately $8.4 million. The unrestricted fund balance serves as the city's emergency reserve, also known as our rainy day fund. We also are proposing a millage rate reduction. The city proposes a reduction in the overall millage rate from 19.2537 to 18.8694 mils, including a HUDLE rollback and a separate .25 mil decrease in the sanitation millage, offering tax relief while maintaining core city services. Couple other highlights, I, it's, it's quite a large budget, so I won't get too in-depth here, but there'll be a lot more talk about it coming up. Neighborhood services, city council suggested, city council leadership suggested that we fund two new ordinance officers to support code enforcement and neighborhood quality. It's something that I agreed strongly on, so I want to thank council president, council president, Pro Tem for their suggestion. We did include that in our proposal. Roads. The proposed budget includes a six-year capital improvement plan totaling 24, $25.3 million to complete 59 road projects, improving transportation safety and infrastructure across our city. Facilities and public safety, $5.8 million of capital investments that include construction of a new fire station number four and related equipment. That's the fire station at Newburgh and Palmer, just in case folks don't know the fire station number. So that'll be next up that we ask city council to, to work with the administration on. Purchase of four new police vehicles and two motorcycles. Park enhancements and play structures. Generator replacement at City Hall. Thank you, Councilman Hart, for your work with the administration on, on that project. IT upgrades and parking lot construction at the Historic Village Park. And looking ahead, this proposed budget represents a forward-looking, comprehensive plan that prioritizes smart investments in infrastructure, public safety, and community well-being. We aim to continue to deliver high-quality services while maintaining a strong financial foundation. We will have three study sessions to discuss the budget on Saturday, April 12th, Saturday, April 26th, and Saturday, May 3rd. All sessions will be held from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. These meetings are open to the public. On April 2nd and 3rd, we had a storm event that most people are aware of that brought three to four inches of rainfall. The Department of Public Service actively responded to street and basement flooding and cleared road and sewage blockages that resulted from the storm. The mayor's office received approximately 50 calls about this storm. Just for comparison, in 2021, it was 495 calls. So quite a few less calls, but obviously, we take this very seriously. We've directed our city staff to inform our residents, asking about disposing of damaged furniture due to the flood, to move them to the curb, and our trash hauler will pick them up at no charge. Also, our contractors will accommodate any senior citizen who needs help moving damaged furniture to the curb, and DPS will keep responding to flooding complaints 24/7. I spoke with our DPS director, Ramsdale Garib, today, very specifically about their plan to look into areas that were affected. I know this is a big concern for a lot of people. I went out and visited some of those areas over the weekend. It's a three-part plan. One is to, the first part is for DPS to talk to homeowners and go out specifically to their homes and test their service lines from the street to their home. If no issues arise there, then they will check the city drains on that street. If no issues arise there, the third step is to inspect the county interceptors. And then we would work with Wayne County to look at a plan to improve that infrastructure. But I do ask homeowners who were affected to make sure, if they haven't yet, please contact the city so that we can make note of your address and send DPS out in a timely manner to, to inspect your, your flooding issues. In other news, after nearly two decades, the pond at Taylor Towers will see fencing come down right about at the end of this month or May 1st. We're in the final stages of remediation, working with the state of Michigan. The environmental testing is complete, and we'll be adding dirt to areas, planting trees, and laying seed and straw. Last month, the city began a new initiative to boost traffic to the businesses affected by the Wayne Road, Wayne Road Bridge closure. We had our first restaurant rally at Thai House, and we had a great turnout, and we're going to be doing it again this month at Penn Station East Coast Subs on Wednesday, April 16th at 4:00 p.m. So I want to invite the community to join me, and any other elected officials are welcome to join as well, to have, have a meal and show your support for our local businesses affected by the bridge closure. After the restaurant rally, I want to ask you to please join me at the next stop of the mayor's 2025 Listening Tour, which is also Wednesday, April 26th at 5:30 p.m. at Legendary Axe at Hush, located at 37550 Cherry Hill Road. I'd like to remind everyone that city offices will be closed on April 18th in observance of Good Friday, and I would like to wish everyone a happy Easter. I'd like to thank Councilwoman Baumann for bringing forth the resolution recognizing May 11th to 17th as National Police Week. I'd like to congratulate, say congrats to Police Chief Dolly and the Westland Police Department on their dual accreditation. The city's very proud of your department, and we ask you to keep up the great work. So thank you. I'd also like to say welcome and congratulations to Westland's newest business, AAA Canso Agency on South Wayne Road. Thank you to the Livonia Westland Chamber of Commerce for joining me to cut the ribbon. And then, lastly, I would just like to speak to my recent trip to Taiwan a couple weeks ago. I wrote city council a short letter, which I'd like to share with the community. Hopefully, the council members, I think you all received it and responded, so I appreciate that. Dear City Council, I am writing to inform you of my recent visit to Taiwan. During my time there, I was honored to solidify our intent to partner with Shinsu City to create a sister-city partnership. This visit provided invaluable opportunity to deepen our collaboration, exchange ideas, and explore potential areas of growth and cooperation between our two cities. I was pleased to sign a memorandum of understanding, MOU, with Acting Mayor Chu Chen Young that outlines our shared goal of developing a friendly and sister-city relationship. During the trip, I had productive meetings with local officials and community leaders, which will help foster economic, cultural, and educational ties in the coming years. With Shinsu City being home to the world's largest semiconductor foundry, Taiwan Semiconductor Manufacturing Company, TSMC, and the city of Westland being in close proximity to Ford and other automotive companies, this offers a unique experience to share, manufacturing knowledge among many other topics. This visit was completely funded by the Taiwan Computer Association, TCA. The work I accomplished there will undoubtedly prove to be an asset to the residents of Westland. I look forward to sharing more about our sister-city partnership with Shinsu City and collaborating on this exciting venture with you. Respectfully, Mayor Kevin Coleman. So it was a very exciting trip. I think it offers a lot of value to the city, and again, I'll just reiterate that I look forward to working with city council on a sister, pursuing a sister-city relationship with Shinsu City in Taiwan, and I look forward to talking with you all more about that soon. And that's my comments tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that. Anything from the city attorney's office this evening? Okay. Thank you, Attorney Passon. All right, we will now begin council comments with comments from Councilman Doug Wishart.
Thank you, Council President. I'll keep it short and sweet. Please remember to adopt. It's not that hard to do at the Humane Society. It's a great experience. I've done it three times now. It's been great every single time, and happy Easter. That's all I got.
Thank you, Councilman. We will now hear from Councilman Hornbuckle.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I'm gonna start off with saying thanks and congratulations to the police department. I know this is not apples to apples or oranges to apples, but I know going through those audits can be rough and painful. I conducted a couple audits, mostly for PCI Technology and HIPAA, so congratulations on going through that, and I look forward to seeing you get it again in three years. So thank you for that. I do look forward to the study session for the Humane Society. When I heard and seen the numbers, I was a little sticker shocked, too. So would like to understand that a little bit more. I don't disagree with going with, Michigan Humane Society is just that, you know, kind of sticker shock, like, man. So like to understand that contract a little bit more. Looking forward to the smiling kids' faces for being able to go out there and play their sport they love. So thank you, council, for approving the money for the Westland Youth Athletic Association. That's really awesome. Also, I'm looking forward to Easter. Look, follow, make sure you follow me on Facebook. I'm looking forward to seeing a lot of kids' faces light up and smile in a couple of weeks. I'll share more details in two weeks, but if you can, just follow me on Facebook, Councilman Duana Hornbuckle. If you need me, just reach out to me, 313-415-4096, and happy two weeks. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Hornbuckle. We will now hear from Councilman Hart.
Oh, boy. No, I'll be brief. Just a couple things real quick. Chief, again, I'll echo everybody else's comments. Congratulations, hard work, definitely something to brag about, and I'll remind people every time I talk to them. So good job, chief. Thank you to you and your entire team. Through the chair to the mayor. I don't know if I missed a memo, and that's very possible. I've been busy lately. When does yard waste pickup start again? Do we know?
April 1st.
So it's active now? Okay, so, so I can have my kids start putting trash out? Okay, perfect.
Whoa.
Because it's all about making my kids do yard work, Mr. Clerk, so, no, that way I got somewhere to send it. I didn't hear, so I just wanted to make sure that everybody at home wanted to know as well, so, very good. And besides that, also, in addition to Easter, happy Passover to our Jewish friends. It'll be from April 12th to April 20th. Thank you. That's it, Council President.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman Hart. We will now hear from Councilwoman Rakowski.
Thank you, Council President, and pardon me, I have a little bit of laryngitis and asthma today. I wanna, again, it always seems like a broken record, but sometimes things just need to be repeated. Thank you, Chief Dolly, and the rest of the police department that worked hard in seeking and obtaining your accreditation, and especially the fact that we're one of five that are duly accredited, that just speaks so loudly about our department. And so, thank you, really, and congratulations, but thank you. April 1st, I got to turn 45, get a budget, and put out my lawn waste. So looking, woo! Looking forward to, you know, digging into the budget and making sure that, you know, we're maintaining the services and everything that the public expects from their municipal budget. I do believe, though, they're from 9:00 to noon. Correct? They're not 9:00 to 3:00?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
And we will have breakfast served.
So just wanted to make sure, because it's like, oh, no! That's a long, long day. Might only need two if we go only to 3:00 o'clock. But other than that, I just want to, like everyone else, wish everyone a happy Easter. I think it's the first time in quite a while, excuse me, that, you know, Easter, as we just call it, an Orthodox Easter, land on exactly the same day, and Passover is right, you know, always there, but it was unique this time to see Orthodox Easter being on the calendar with Easter, so that's extra special. Wish everyone peace and happiness, and we'll see you guys in just a few weeks. But I, in the meantime, I do encourage you to attend the study sessions on the budget. Your input is valuable, and it's an inside look at what really goes on with city council and how we allocate dollars and work with the administration on allocating all of those dollars. So that would be your opportunity to make good input, so I would encourage you to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rakowski. We will now hear from Pro Tem Melissa Sampe.
Thank you, Council President. Happy April, everyone. Happy birthday again, Councilwoman Rakowski. How fun is it to get a budget and your trash, right? That's, you're like, oh, great. Chief, congratulations again on your dual accreditation. I can't go without saying that you guys work very hard. I know that you guys have had challenges with staffing. You're pretty close to being almost full-staffed or, or there. You're getting there. You're getting there. So, but being one of five departments, and I know the 128 professional standards, I mean, that's, that's no feat. So you guys do a great job. I've done, you know, ride along before, and I see how busy you are in the type of runs that you guys do, so I appreciate you guys always. I am looking forward to seeing everyone at our first budget session, as mentioned, 9:00 to noon. I know Councilwoman Rakowski kind of laid it all out, but it really is a huge task that city council has to go through and, you know, make tough decisions and ask a lot of questions, so we really look forward to having everyone involved in the process. I know it was brought up about the RV concerns, so I did speak with Linda about this. I know that I did speak with the chief and then deputy chief, so I think we can get a plan to figure out what's going on. I know previously, when they had the junk cars, we had, had to call the landlord, so there, there probably is a way to intercept, to try to figure out how we can clean this up, and I know chief will stay after, but definitely is something, if it's been going on for a few months. I know the process of, I don't want to say eviction, but the process does take a minute, but chief, for sure, you know, Linda, we'll, we'll get that taken care of, because that's, that's definitely not a safe environment, and people that work there, we don't want them to feel unsafe either. But I appreciate you bringing that up, because these are the types of eyes and ears in the community that we need. Thank you, Melody, for bringing up all the flyers. If you can email those to us, I want to make sure that we can screenshot them all and put them on our Facebook page. There's so many great events, and I love the one that you mentioned about the LLC and doing like a resource fair, resource fair here at City Hall. I think it's, it's definitely something that I would love to see Parks and Rec do or even as a city. So you guys have a lot of great things, too, at the Women's Commission, so I missed the event today, but I know that you guys had probably a really good turnout. I saw your Facebook Live, so, yeah, absolutely. Over the weekend, I did receive quite a bit of calls in response to the flooding. I want to thank the mayor for taking my I want to thank the mayor for taking my numerous calls, and I know that he was out this weekend, but as he stated, any resident that has flood issues, city council did invest, and one of our ARPA spending was the camera truck equipment. So, a couple of years back, I don't know if city council members or those that weren't on city council at the time, we did purchase a camera that will allow us to identify blockages in our sanitary sewer system. So, that is being used regularly, but I know that the flood that happened was due, it sounds like, to the Wayne County sewer, and I'm looking at the mayor and septers between the Rouge Rivers. So, it's not saying the city's fully to blame, but it sounds to me like there were some breakdowns that need to be identified. So, I would encourage any resident that is watching this, contact the mayor's office. I know he's working with our DPS department, but those that do have issues or are affected, please, 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 contact the mayor's office. I was speaking with an individual, and I said typically in flood situations like this, a home insurance would cover it. So, I know that there's a couple of different things that the mayor had told me, but please, please, I mean, let's start documenting this, so if you have issues, please contact the mayor's office. I wanted to congratulate, on the consent calendar was the Youth Assistance Administration, Paul Motts, for a six-year contract. I talk about, I think I do talk about youth assistance frequently here and there, but Paul Motts does an amazing job. Those that may not know, we have an amazing, amazing youth assistance program. They do things in the community, they offer classes, parenting classes, and Paul Motts and his team really are at the center of what we do. So, I just wanted to congratulate Paul and his team. This is just an appropriate time to give him a shout-out, because they do an amazing job. There's a lot of great success stories that come out of their program, too. A lot of teens that may come in with some drug addictions, and they come in and they turn their life around. So, wanted to congratulate Paul and thank him again for all of his work, and it was great to see that we're extending the contract for another six years. I also wanted to mention about the CERT program. Linda, you are going to be excited to know, because I know you ask about this. We have connected with the county. We are in the process of getting the equipment, and the mayor has given thumbs up to say, let's go ahead and start recruitment of volunteers. So, I reached out to the fire chief. We're going to work on some PSAs in regards to education, but also for signup. So, I need to work with Craig Brown, our Director of IT. We're going to create a form. People are going to be able to submit their information for interest, and then from there, we're going to collect it, put it on the website, and start education. So, I'm super excited. This has been something in the works for quite some time. I want to thank the city council for allowing us to fund the program. I don't think, according to Chief, we're not going to need a lot of the money. It's going to be more of like the second phase that we'll need that money. But the people that would be volunteering will be helping with non-emergency projects in the community to improve safety, and it's really to ensure disaster preparedness with those individuals, that they'll be educated enough, if we need the volunteers, they'll be able to jump in. So, they'll be helping with like crowd control, and, you know, if there is a flooding disaster, they can help with water distribution. But also, they're going to go through a training with CPR, Stop the Bleed, and First Aid. So, there's going to be online training, and also, there's going to be some in-person training, about 20 hours. So, it's a great opportunity for you to give back. Again, it is volunteer, but we'll be getting a form up, we'll be getting some names. Once we get about 20 people, we're going to begin the training, and this is done through, I think FEMA is the one that's going to do the training, right, Chief?
Wayne County Homeland.
Okay. Wayne County Homeland Security. So, yeah, we're in full swing, so I'm excited, and we'll make sure to get all the information out. I'll have it on probably the city page and the mayor's in support, so he'll be having it out in his information, too. And my last thing that I wanted to talk about really quickly is our Autism Acceptance Community Day. I wanted to give a little bit more context on that. So, on April 26th, we are going to have a community day and walk. This is going to be taking place at Central City Park. We're going to kick things off kind of by the pavilion at 4:00. Then the mayor and I will walk around the park around 4:15. After it is done, we are going to have a great community day. It's going to be acceptance, celebration, fun. Our Westland Police officers are going to be there, the firefighters will be on hand, we're going to have face painting, DJ, bounce houses, resources, a sensory area for those that just need a little quiet, and food. We originally started out with just a couple quote-unquote vendors that wanted to get involved. I've been working really, really hard to make sure that everything's completely free, so I wanted to thank the following companies and individuals that stepped up in sponsorship. Soleil Construction is our presenting sponsor. They're going to be donating in the amount of $2,000 to help with the food underwriting. I wanted to thank them. They said, no questions asked, whatever you need, we'll make it happen. Congresswoman Rashida Talib is giving us $1,000 to help with activities. Hagira Health, $1,000. Stop 500, the firefighters are coming in and giving us 500. Councilman Hornbuckle is going to donate the ice cream, so thank you for that. He said, absolutely. Don Nicholson's going to do all of our signs. The Westland Police Partnership is going to donate our bounce house, so thank you so much for your involvement. And then I know that Living and Learning Enrichment said they want to be involved in a sponsorship in Team Wellness Westland. So, we have a lot of great people involved. Again, this is about acceptance, and for individuals that have autism, it gives them an opportunity to just feel accepted, and parents to feel comfortable. A lot of times, when you go to an event, a child that has sensory disorders or issues or disability in some form or fashion, they break down, they have meltdowns, they just need a safe space. So, this is going to be no judgment at all. This is going to be a community event where everyone can come and feel comfortable, and that was my hope, that we can give the space, a safe space, and an opportunity for people just to enjoy. No judgment. So, I hope you'll join us, again, as you guys hear in my voice with the passion. It's going to be a great event, and we've been working really hard with a great team of people that I'll be recognizing at the next meeting, but I just hope that you'll join us on Saturday, the 26th at 4:00. It's going to be from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. So, with that being said, I'll wrap up just by saying happy Easter and Passover. I hope to see you at some budget study sessions, but our next meeting is Monday, the 21st at 7:00. Obviously, we invite everyone to come out, and everyone be safe and kind with each other, and, you know, we hope to see you soon.
Well, thank you very much, Pro Tem Sampe. And for those of you that may have had the chance to attend last year's Autism Awareness Walk-in Event, this one's going to be bigger and better than even our inaugural event. So, when she promised last year that we were going to grow it and make it better, she's done exactly that and worked with the administration to do it, so thank you for that. Few things. First off, I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge the first thing that Ms. Dale brought up to me. There is an exciting event that's going on all month long here in the city of Westland called the Westland Rights 2025. And that is where authors in the city of Westland could submit their poetry and short stories up to the Westland Library, and the best poems and short stories will be chosen and ultimately published in the Westland Rights 2025 book publication. If you are looking to submit a poem or short story for the Westland Rights 2025, you can actually call librarian Caitlin Smith at the Westland Public Library, and you can call 734-326-6132. Again, you're calling for librarian Caitlin Smith at 734-326-6132. You can submit it from now until the end of the month, so until the end of April, you have the opportunity to submit your poems and short stories for the Westland Rights 2025. And this is something that they've published for a number of years running, so this is a really great opportunity for the authors of all ages here in the city of Westland to be involved and maybe even be published. Again, just want to congratulate the PD on their hard work for the accreditation, Chief, and Lieutenant Gotti, and all the police officers who year-round make this possible, so for the hard work and dedication and running a top-notch and professional department. Thank you. With regards to the flooding, I also had some residents reach out to me where they were wondering kind of what they should do in the aftermath of the flooding, so the more communication that we can get as council members from the administration, I think, the better. So, we can ultimately pass that information along to residents in a timely and efficient manner, whether it's, you know, direct emails and correspondence to us, or it's something that goes out on social media so that everybody can see it. I know one of the big pain points that, you know, I had back in 2021 was waiting a few days for communication, and I felt like we had that here again. So, the more communication we can get, the sooner we can get it, so we can push that out to residents, I think the better we will all collectively be. I do want to thank Ramsey, our DPS director, Ramsey Algarib, and his DPS team for all the hard work that they did, going and helping out residents who were flood-affected. So, thank you for the hard work going around the city, making sure that things were getting taken care of for residents, and helping folks out who may have a disability, who are senior citizens and can't get flood-and-water-damaged goods out of their home or out of their basement. With regards to the flooding, thank you to my colleague for bringing up what we have invested in, invested in previously in city council, $400,000 into some flood remediation equipment, the camera program. Thank you to the mayor and the administration, DPS, for implementing that program. One other thing that I've had the chance to do a lot of research on and talked actually to our city attorney about is kind of thinking outside the box and making investments, not only in our water and sewer infrastructure, but in green infrastructure programs that can really help us with potential future flood remediation. So, I wrote a long post about it on my city council page at Councilman Mike McDermott, so I'm not going to go through the whole post, but if you're, you're very welcome. But if you are interested in learning more about green infrastructure, obviously, Google can be a best friend to everybody, or you can go to my page at Councilman Mike McDermott and learn about some of the avenues that I'd like to see us invest in, like bioswales, rain gardens, and things like of that nature. Want to thank Paul Motts and his entire team for the incredible work they do with the youth in our community. Paul has been with the city of Westland, I believe, 22 years, and this city council, previous councils, the administration, and previous administrations have continued to support Paul and his team for 22 years running for the youth assistance program. I know my colleague on council, Councilman Wishart, I believe, is one of the youth mentors over there with Paul's team, so thank you for, you know, being a mentor.
He's a board.
Yep. And Pro Tem Sampe's on the board as well, so thank you. And thanks to the mayor and my colleagues on council for continuing to support the great work that Paul does for kids and their families here in the community. You know, there's an entire team of people that Paul works with that support what he does to help lift up and enrich the lives of young people in our community. I know we have members in the audience here who also work as mentors here in the community, so I appreciate all the work that you do as well. But, you know, thank you, Paul, for everything that you do to impact and positively enrich the lives of so many kids over the years here in our Westland community. And then with that, if anybody needs anything else from me, I'm always available at 734-890-2146 with a call or text, or, as I mentioned previously, on my council page at Councilman Mike McDermott. I hope that you all have a very happy and joyous Easter celebration and a happy Passover. Let's remember when we are celebrating Easter, the true meaning of Easter, and that the true spirit of the holiday is to take care of those who are less fortunate, to lift up those around us, to take care of the poor, to feed the hungry, to clothe the naked, to provide health care for the sick. I think that is the true meaning of the resurrection and the Easter holiday that we celebrate. But I do hope you all have a joyous Easter Passover, whichever you choose to celebrate, or if you celebrate nothing at all, just have a wonderful and relaxing Sunday. And with that is our motion to adjourn.